I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's see. Roll call, Jeremy.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here.
Mrs. Mars.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here. All right, stand up and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on down, we need approval of tonight's agenda. I will take a motion for that.
We need to add something to the agenda.
Okay, that is correct. We need to add executive session, correct?
Correct.
To the agenda? We need approval to add that?
So you need a motion for that, yes.
Okay. I need a motion to add executive session to the meeting tonight.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, do we need to recall roll for that?
Yes, and just state the purpose for why we're doing that.
We're going to move into executive session to consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, and to negotiate with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance, and no action will be taken during this meeting.
Correct.
All right, so we have a motion from JoJo and a second from Steve. Jeremy, would please call roll.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Now we can approve the agenda.
All right, now we need the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion for that?
So move.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, now everyone has had the chance to go over the minutes from the previous meeting on June 26th. If anyone has any questions for those, we will answer those now. If not, I will take a motion to approve the June 26th, 2025 Board of Education minutes.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, minutes have been approved. We have nothing for hearing of the public for agenda items, and now we're going to move down to the treasurer's agenda.
So we got everything closed up last month. So that's the good news, finished the year in the black. One thing that I held off on doing is I did not establish the fund that we discussed for future projects because that is still in limbo if we're going to need to do it or not, so I put that on pause. So the 070 account is an option, but we don't need to do it right this minute because anything that happens will have 90 days from that point in time to move forward to make those changes, so I held off on doing that.
Okay.
Unless we have to. It was not something I wanted to do, but it was something we were going to do if we needed to, so I did not do that. Were there any other questions about the financials at the end? Again, we finished the year in the black. That is our 17th year in the black, so...
It's always a plus.
It is. It's good, we've been doing well. Things could change. The governor helped public schools by his veto of multiple issues that was in the budget, and then the House came back and over owed one of the vetoes, but the Senate has not met to concur with that, so nothing has changed at this point in time. However, they have till December 31st of 2026.
Jesus.
To...
How does anything ever get done?
You know, that's why I was asked about five-year forecasting, which is now sort of a two-and-a-half-year, three-year forecast, I don't know what you want to call it, but because they cut that down because they know that their information is only good for so long, just the same, so you're having us have a magic globe and figure out what they're doing in Columbus, which we can't figure out 90% of the time, so I don't know. I mean, this could change on a whim, you know, so we're just sort of going with the flow, and I wish I had great answers, but...
Don't you think more people are kind of understanding than... I've heard more people talking about they're not, they don't want to do away with property tax, they just want some kind of other, you know, negotiate how it goes. I feel the public is more aware of that.
I would say the governor, and I'm... Governor's been all over the place at times, but in this case, he actually, I think, has the most sense when it comes to bringing a committee of people together with practitioners who do this work in the field, be it the auditor's office, a school treasurer, a township trustee, I mean, this affects everybody because getting rid of property tax means that you're getting rid of and defunding police and fire as well as school districts. I don't think people are necessarily on board with the totality of just dispersing property tax completely without some other means of doing that, and we know sales tax isn't the answer because that's a 22% to 24%, 25% sales tax, which would be the highest in the entire country, so everyone will go buy their stuff in another state. Like, it doesn't make any sense, so we have to come together and figure that out. There were common sense solutions that have been offered the entire time. We think that senior citizens over the age of 65 should be paying property taxes, probably not, or a much lower share than what they're currently paying. We don't want to see them taxed out of their homes, so does it freeze at some point in time? There are all those questions that could be asked and solutions that could be provided that would, I think, benefit the people who need it the most, but it's not going to be pretty. I mean, the next tax bill is, they're already saying it's going to go up at least 25% as far as your valuation on your home is concerned, and that's not something the district's doing, it's not something the county auditor's doing, it's something that the State Department of Taxation is requiring, like, the values to be accurate for what property prices are selling for. So we're going to get this again, this next wave of property tax bills that are coming are going to be higher for people, and it makes me ill because I don't, again, I don't want to see people taxed out of their homes, but there's got to be a better way than just doing away with it. Like, that doesn't, that isn't going to serve our community at all, so we've got to come up with a solution. The offers that, the ideas that have been coming out of the House are more about long-term ideas and not, like, not short-term relief. Because some of the stuff that was in there really wasn't going to help anybody anytime in the short term. It was, it was more punishment for schools than it was actual property tax relief for people who pay the bills. So anyways, we're still working through it. Hopefully, the committee will come together and do something versus just getting rid of it completely or basically cutting all this funding. I don't, I don't know. I wish I had a great answer to how to do this, but schools have been unconstitutionally funded for a long time now, and nobody has seemed to want to step up to the plate with a better idea, so until that happens, we're going to keep having these problems. Anyway, any other questions about that or the financial reports? There's fund-to-fund transfers in here that you're going to be approving tonight. One of them is a half-million-dollar transfer that we did at the end of the year for the severance fund, that brings that severance fund up to a million dollars that we have set aside to be able to pay out as our aging staff starts to retire so that it doesn't negatively impact the budget as we move forward. The transfer that we do at the end of the year to the permanent improvement levy to continue the projects that we're working out on the high school, as well as two small transfers for food service for the Allison Trust. That's money that the Allison Trust gives to those students who can't afford meals while they were free this year, so that ends up going to more of a snack program that we have, that we run, that we provide food when kids go home at the end of the day, and then the money that gets moved over for athletics, running the tournaments that we have on site. Those are the things that we're transferring money for. Last thing that's on there is the commercial paper report. We do buy commercial paper. That was attached to the documents. Commercial paper is a level, I would say it's just as secure as all the things that I'm allowed to invest in with CDs because you've got to stay under $250,000, but commercial paper doesn't have a guarantee, so if for some reason that company would go out of business, we could potentially lose that money. However, we're only allowed to invest in very highly bonded commercial paper, which is typically things like Procter &amp; Gamble that aren't going to be going out of business anytime soon. So that's where you'll see our money is wrapped up in companies that are very large, part of the Fortune 500.
Any questions for Jeremy? Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the treasurer's agenda.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and now Jeremy, would you please call roll?
Mr. Frazier. Mrs. McMackin. Mrs. Mars.
Hi.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right, moving on, superintendent's report.
Thank you. We are in the process of updating our report cards, the information we use to communicate to our parents, the students' progress. We started with the elementary grades this year, we'll move that up through the next year here, but Kiara is heading up that project, so she's here to talk to you and the community about what that looks like, how we started that work, and who's been engaged in it.
Good evening, everyone. How is everyone doing?
Good.
Good. Thank you for this time. Hopefully, I won't be too long. Okay, so as I shared, I think it was in the spring when we started this process, that we were going to start with gathering feedback from various groups. We met with staff, we met with a smaller group of our staff members, which is our intervention specialist, to get the perspective of them in regards to our students with disabilities. We met with parents. We did have a small group of students, but the majority of the feedback did come back from our staff and student, or, sorry, staff and parents. We sifted through all that information, tried to, you know, come to a consensus, and we felt pretty strongly about the decisions that we started vying for and proposed based off of what parents told us. That, that kind of matriculated to the top in terms of where we wanted to go. There were a lot of different angles, but ultimately, we feel like we mostly met everyone's requests and needs, and again, our goal with this was just to improve upon what we were already doing with standard space grading. And I'm sorry I didn't specify this on my presentation, but most of the changes that I'm talking about tonight are specific to K-3, so it'd be Spring Creek and Washington. But again, out of all of the feedback that we collected, we realized that even within everything that everyone was saying, what we heard from parents is that while knowing how their child was performing on all of the standards, because remember, our current report card or previous report card listed all standards that Ohio State requires us to teach. All of those standards were listed on the report card, and ultimately, the parents told us that that was okay, but just, they just walked away not really having a firm grasp on where their kids stood with all of that. That was probably the loudest piece of feedback that we got from them. And I want to also say that when we were doing this work, the majority of the work was done by a smaller committee. All four of our primary principals were involved, that's both principals and the assistant principals, and then our academic coaches and myself. But Mr. Loudonback, principal of Spring Creek, he kind of took the lead in terms of the perspective of the principals. He and I met lots of times, but we all met just as much also. Okay, so just real quick, this is some of the things that we heard from parents. I put some things in quotes just so, to give you an idea, but generally speaking, there was a lot of confusion from their perspective on the grading scale. You remember the marks that students received on the report card was a four, a three, a two, or a one? They told us that, yes, we provide them a rubric and we've given them, you know, explanations on what all that means, but it was confusing and hard to remember and keep up with, and that if we could change it, that it would be easier to remember things that are directly connected to a word, so for example, E for X. That's not one of the ones that ended up on the report card, which I'll show you in a minute, but that's just an example of, it was hard to translate numbers to meaning versus an acronym. Some of our grading practices that are a part of just most districts who implement standard space grading, some of the practices that are a part of that traditionally, unintentionally created teaching practices that we, we didn't feel were in the best interest of our students. So for example, a common practice is to allow the students to be assessed on individual standards and to give them multiple opportunities throughout the year until they meet mastery. And you would think at first glance that that is beneficial for the student to let them keep trying on a particular standard, but what we heard from parents and teachers is that it created this sense of apathy, that there was, it kind of took away from the sense of urgency because parents and students felt like they had the entire year to get there, so it really wasn't important what the report card said, and it was hard to keep the kids accountable. And also, looking at grades or scores from all standards is a lot, which I mentioned, we listed every single standard that we teach on the report card, so parents just felt like they got lost in that. Being given a number one to four for each standard doesn't tell me how my child's doing overall. They wanted like an overall mark. Yes, I know my kid is doing good in all these standards, but they just want to know, how's my child doing math? How's my kid doing in... And they just felt like bias reporting marks on all the standards, they didn't feel like they had an overall sense of how my kid was doing in math. And I already mentioned that sense of urgency. One comment, even as fresh as yesterday, we met with another group of parents just yesterday, more specifically about accessing parent progress book. That's where they get their report cards and grades. Parent just yesterday used these words, it's not, grades aren't really important until seventh grade, and I heard that also somehow unintentionally because of how we were communicating how kids were doing, parents didn't feel like it really becomes important until the GPA hits. And a few other things that we came across is, that we're working on, is they were having challenges with accessing progress book and then just general communication about the reporting periods when report cards were available, how to get to them and all that. Some of the things are echoed from our staff in terms of some of the challenges, but they were struggling to keep up with all of the grades, and probably one of those practices that were probably unintentional was that the teachers were responsible for reporting grades for each individual standard, which means they had to assess each individual standard, but that's actually contrary to the intent of the standards. When you think about life skills and problem solving, you don't solve a real-life problem with one isolated skill. You solve a real problem that involves multiple skills and concepts. That's the nature of a rigorous, real problem, and so unintentionally, by expecting our teachers to assess individual skills, we were only expecting the kids to do low-level things, hopefully. That kind of makes sense, and the intent of the new standards is to not expect isolated skills. The overall intent of the standards is for kids to be lifelong problem solvers, and so it was, it just kind of caught us off-guard when we really started to look closely at our teaching practices. So one of the things that the staff shared with us is that, if you recall, last year, along with our standard report card, the primary buildings decided to try something where they communicated to parents how students were performing with success-bound expectations. Success-bound are the thing, are the expectations that are on the wall, large in every building, they're just real simple bullets that says, ultimately, this is what we expect by the end of the grade level, right, four or five things. Well, they, they communicated where their students were on each of those things, and at the end of conferences, everybody, parents and teachers, they felt way more confident in their communication with each other about how those kids are doing because they were just focused on those few really important things versus trying to communicate all of the things on the report card. So when we heard that, we tried to figure out, how can we take that and capitalize on it and turn that into how we communicate on our report card? We had lots of other comments, but I'm trying to keep it short. So ultimately, after we gathered and listened and all that good stuff, this is kind of where we landed. Our goal is to improve how we accurately, more accurately reflect what students know and can do independently. It was kind of another discovery is that a lot of the things that were put in the report card or in the grade book were things that students weren't necessarily doing independently, so it really wasn't a true picture of how they, what they can do and where they are. And parents actually told us that that was confusing to them. They wanted to know where their could, where their kids stood academically, and it was confusing when they looked at grades because they just felt like it didn't really tell them where their could, where their kids stood because it may have included other things that may or may not have included independent work. So that's kind of where we're honing in on, again, to improve how we accurately reflect what students know and can do independently in relation to just those standards that are most important, things that lead to success bound. So this is kind of our little mantra, we had to create this so that we can help the teachers understand essentially what we're going for. We still teach all the standards, and we had to say that because, you know, just because we're shortening the number of standards that we're reporting on the report card doesn't mean we're not teaching them all. We're still teaching Ohio's learning standards as they are. We monitor and evaluate students on most, all of the most important standards, but we will only grade and report on the report card the ones that are most important versus everything. That's what we did before. That's the biggest shift. So here's just a screenshot for the academics portion of the report card. This is what the parents will see. If you'll see, so this would be for language arts, and right underneath there, there is an overall performance. Again, remember, the parents told us they wanted to know overall where does my kid stand? We didn't ever do that before, we just gave individual marks for each individual standard. So a kid will receive an M for meets grade level, they're at grade level, a P for progressing, they're progressing towards grade level, or limited, or not, not on grade level. And then they also told us that they didn't, when they looked at the report card, they didn't know what to help their kids with because they had trouble translating what the standards meant, because they're long and lengthy and very technical. And so we made the language very friendly, we cut down all the extra stuff. So this information over here is actually those most important standards that we all agreed on. We cut down the language, and they also told us they wanted to, they didn't know how to help their kid with the things that they were still challenged with. So the pluses and minuses will tell them, oh, Johnny is doing really well with these, but he needs to work on, you know, his written responses when he reads a story. Does anyone have any questions about that? Attendance will look a little different as well. What we realized is traditionally, the way we report attendance doesn't, it also doesn't trigger urgency, and we really need our attendance to improve. The way we report attendance on our report cards traditionally doesn't match what we have to report to the state in terms of chronic absenteeism, so we decided to merge those two things together. So in the past, we would just tell parents how many days kids were present or absent per quarter, and they never really saw that over the course of quarters, they could be accumulating and end up in a different category. So now, we're going to tell them an accumulation, this is where you are as a first quarter, and we're going to highlight whether that's satisfactory, at-risk, or chronic, and this, these thresholds align to the state expectations for, you have to be present 95% or higher. So for first quarter, wherever they stand at that time, this, I know it's small, I'm sorry, it says hours present, hours absent, and then percent present, and this percent present will tell them whether they're satisfactory, at-risk, or chronic. Then the second quarter, it will be year-to-date as well, so, you know, a kid could be okay in the first quarter, but they accumulated some more things, but because we've always reported them in each individual quarter, a parent might have not ever known that they've accumulated enough to make them at-risk or chronic. This is just a chart, and I can provide this later if needed, but the chart in the middle is, when I told you the meets, progressing, or limited, percent-wise, this is where this lines up. We compared it to seventh, seventh through 12th grades, our board policy grading, to make sure that where we were better aligned with this because we also heard from parents that they didn't feel like, I mean, they weren't completely opposed to standard space grading, they, some of them really wanted us to go back to the traditional ABCD like 7-12, but we weren't, we weren't, we weren't planning to do that, but we felt like better aligning our percentages to 7-12 was kind of a meeting in the middles. So for example, an over, for in order to get that overall mark of meets grade level, that's 80 to 100%, for example. And I just put over here, this is what it used to be previously with the 4-3-2-1. I know you can't read this, but I just wanted to show you, this is on the teacher's side, what we've prepared for the teachers to help them do this. So the coaches and I have gone through our curriculum, and we've already mapped out all of the things that the teachers are to grade that will align to what they put on their grade card. It's not something they have to figure out, or you do it this way, but you do it this way. All first-grade teachers will have the same grades in the report card, and parents did tell us that they recognized that from class to class, that three could mean something completely different, and so it will be consistent. Now, we did share this with staff at the end of the year to give them feedback, but how do you feel about us doing that? And we actually didn't get very much feedback at all, or not feedback, we got feedback, but it was positive, we didn't get any pushback or anyone contesting that. So these are the documents that, some of the things that we've worked on to help guide them on that. We meet with teacher leaders next Friday to pre-train them because we want to build their capacity, and then they'll help us, myself and the coaches and the principals, roll this out to all staff when they come back the week before school starts. We'll continue to support them throughout the year, and I forgot to add this on the slideshow, that Next Steps will do us another review with PCIS through this next school year. It was too much to do it all this past school year.
Any questions for Kiara?
K-3.
That's K-3.
K through 3. These changes right now, just K-3, we'll move to work on 4-6 this upcoming school year.
But 4-6 is only using the 1-2-3-4, or they're using ABC?
They're using 1-2-3-4.
So you'll transition then to this?
That is correct. As of now, I mean, we haven't talked, we haven't sat down and talked to parents and staff, but that's, that's where we see it going.
And then, I forget, I know we talked about this, but the goal for 7th through 12th, it's going to stay the same, or it's eventually maybe going to go to this too?
No, there isn't anything in the works.
Can't because they need, they have to have GPA.
That is correct.
So the whole point of doing this this way is just to try to provide more focused information?
Focused information, but one way we are aligning to 7-12, even though it's not the traditional ABCD, is the averaging. We weren't... We weren't averaging in the past. So, um, a kid, um, you know, maybe they had four tries on a particular standard throughout the year and the teacher didn't average all those tries. They just got the highest mark out of all of them and that's what gave them their three or a four. That's very different because you're accountable for all of your marks all year long and it becomes an average. And so parents were saying that that was hard to keep their children accountable because, even themselves, because they knew my kid's going to get four more tries and the highest score that they get is going to trump all of their other ones versus an average. So we feel like changing over to average will help build some more accountability and align more with what seven, twelve, even though the marks look different.
Traditionally, you know, you think back of when we were younger, you know, getting an A or a B was important and a pa, and a parent likes to reward a kid for that. But the question that lingered was now what do I need to do for the kid that has that C or D or even a B to get them higher? Just a letter grade itself never gave enough information. So standard base really says, here's all the things we're required to teach your child in this grade level and here's what they're doing individually. So now we can give them the, they're meeting it or they're progressing or they're limited, but here are the specific things that they need help with. So it's just giving more details rather than just saying, you got a B.
Did we ever before show plus or minus? So where a parent would know, okay, now I gotta work on this. We've never done that before. That would be new this year? I think that's good.
Because the parents told us, I don't know what to do with this. I don't know how to help my kid. I don't know what they're, what they're good at and, you know, what they still need to work on. And so we felt that was a happy medium as well.
So you could give them like they're, they're doing passing, but yet these are areas that you need to attend to instead of just, well, they're passing, they're doing good.
Right.
They know that there's a couple areas they need to pick on.
That is correct. And those areas are aligned to the standards, not just whatever the teacher comes up with, you know, participation, grade work, tissue box, you know, all different kind of things. That's something standard space grading kind of.
And this language was a lot easier to understand than the previous language.
Yes. That was a, they didn't, they, it just, the entire standard for the most part was listed on the report card and that was a lot.
No, that makes sense.
I really liked the attendance piece. They spent a lot of time on that and even the color coding will make it very easy for a, a parent to see if it's red, you know, you're in that zone you don't want to be in. So we got to really work on getting the attendance back up and it's all based on state standards.
And they probably didn't understand like if they had one grading period where it was really bad.
Right.
How that affects it all the way through. They think, well, I'm all right now because of that.
Exactly.
It does make a, a difference.
Yes, we hope it'll give us a, a bump.
I like it.
She's, she and the principals and the teachers have spent an enormous amount of time on this and I appreciate the effort in getting parents and students involved. That, that voice was really important and it's, it's very well-rounded. Thank you, Kara. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay or leave. It's up to you.
Don't think too long about that answer.
Some back to school information, um, you know, we're getting to that time of year where, um, you know, we're starting to see things posted on social media. Somebody will say, when are class lists going to be posted? When's this going to happen? So, um, we always start that first week of summer break with all the information people need for the next school year. So it's on our website at www.pickwa.org. Highly encourage people to go to the website. There's a link right there with every single thing they need to know. If they still have a question, I would encourage them to call the building. The secretaries and principals are in. They can call the board office during our hours. We'll be happy to help them. And I'm just really want to get people the right accurate information. So if they just reach out that way or look on our website, they should have everything they need. We're communicating stuff out and we'll do more as we get closer to school year two through our ParentSquare app. So it's, it's, it's still coming. Um, would like for people to contact the board to register their children. So if there's anybody out there that wants to register their child, maybe they've moved to the community. Um, in particular kindergarten registration is still going on. So any kid that's five prior to August first, um, they should contact the board and we really want that to happen sooner than later, mostly because we've got to get information from them so we can get them into our communication pathways and we need to get transportation set up for them. Speaking of transportation, today was the last day for those forms to be turned in. We sent out a number, uh, many, 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 um, notifications all throughout the summer to do that. It's important for parents to do that now because we've got to get them on routes. It's not, we, we, they can't call the day before school and say, I want my kid on a bus. And that's because they have, we have to have the information. Imagine if there was an accident, we don't want that to happen. But we have to have all the information before we put a kid on a bus. We can't just place them on there and collect information later. Some parents think we can do that. They just say, here, put my kid on a bus and we'll get you that information later. If it's in the, in the country, sometimes it can add five to 10 minutes to that route if we have to go to a certain house and that changes the route for everybody that rides that bus. So we have to give parents and bus drivers all notifications. So it's not real easy to just do it quickly. That's why we're asking for that information now. So if anybody out there has a kid that needs transportation and they want that for the first week of school, we really need that, that information turned in as soon as possible. So we'd like to encourage that. Um, just an update on careful corners. We had a great turnout this year. Forty-six kids came, um, they're having their graduation tomorrow, which will be really fun. Um, if you want to stop by and see that, I think it's around noon, if I remember correctly. Um, you're welcome to stop by and do that. Um, special thanks to our Pickle Police, our Pickle Fire Department, our own transportation department and Bike Pickwa all came and, um, were guest speakers and presenters. Um, Walmart's providing food for tomorrow's graduation and EpsoLite donated bike helmets to every single kindergartner that, um, came to the program. So we're, we thank all those people.
Was that down at the Armory?
It was, it was at Washington.
Washington, okay.
Yeah, yep. Our highly anticipated district calendars, um, should be in mailboxes very soon. Um, we're getting people calling, asking, are we going to get a calendar this year? So we know people really enjoy those. We enjoy putting them together. There's some great information in there, um, lots, all the dates for all the important things. So it's really a great opportunity for people to see how they can get engaged in the schools, um, contact information. You know, you guys are all in there, so we encourage everybody to take a look at those and use them. I hang one up at my office and use it, um, very regularly and I'm still engaged in the school, but I still love to see that and know what's coming. I can look long-term. Um, it has information on how to get tickets, like season passes and, um, for musicals, et cetera. So it just makes everything really easy to get engaged with. And, um, finally, our thousand books for kindergarten continues to progress. It's gaining traction. We just had two more kids this week reach the thousand, um, bookmark. Um, they, they graduated, if you will. Um, a lot of kids, um, found out about it through the summer reading program this summer at the Pickle Public Library who we're partnering with. So, um, there's still always time to get engaged with that. Anybody that has a child birth through five, we're just trying to get kids, um, into text rather than just phones. We need kids coming to school with experience with books, so we're trying to get kids to do that. Um, you can contact the Pickle Public Library or, um, the board office and, and one of us will get you set up for that program. So just a special note on that, um, for people at home. And that's it for my update.
All right. Any questions for Dwayne? All right. Thank you very much for all that info.
Move on to the agenda?
Yep, move on to the superintendent's agenda.
Recommend the board approval of the attached list of donations and grants to Pickle City Schools. So we had some people donate money to the Indian Nation Station, which was through the Gulf outing. That was McCalla Baker Insurance, DataServe and Bradley Payne, as well as Medical Mutual. And then Altrusa donated money to the Spring Creek Library. Would like to recommend board approval of the attached list of the Pickle City School District free and reduced lunch policy and food district, food service, the, I can't say the word, department annual compliance report for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We got the CEP grant again this year, which means no student K through twelve, uh, will have to pay for any breakfast or lunches. If they buy extra, they'll have to pay for that, but the regular lunches, K through twelve, um, will be free as part of that grant. They don't have to fill out any paperwork, um, or do anything to be in compliance with that. So that's a great, um, thing for those families. And then recommend board approval for the updated Pickle City School District Code of Conduct and Athletic, um, Department Handbook. Um, Judge Joe and, and Steve looked at those and worked a little bit with Chip on those. Do you guys have anything you want to add to that or any questions? Any thoughts?
Other than we learned that there was some kind of committee.
Athletic committee.
We never knew that before.
That's the committee you guys are on. And in January, when we go through committees, you're on that committee. Yeah.
But he talked just about, but yeah, it was, it's good. I don't think there's anything really rationally different.
Nothing really different. We've, we've asked, you, you tend to kind of, um, roll things over year to year. So we've done that for several years. So, um, Tony and I have asked all principals to this school year, really look at handbooks. We're in compliance, but just kind of shore them up, make sure verbiage is, is more up to date and that they look nice. Um, so they're working this year, so next year when you get their handbooks, they'll all be revamped. Chip was a part of that conversation and said, do you care if I just work on that this summer and get them updated? I'd really like to, to shore that up. So you probably found just more, um...
There was a lot of redundancy.
Yeah.
And he tried to get it away.
Yeah.
But some of it, you still have to be redundant on some of that.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't get it if you don't.
You have to.
Yeah. Any other questions for anybody on that? Okay, I know you worked really hard and I appreciate you guys taking a look at that and working with them on that. I recommend board approval of the attached list of library books from PHS for disposal and removal from the inventory of Pickle City School District. Again, they're just working on, on, um, updating their, their library books over the summer and they're weeding out books that aren't being read or just are old or, um, you know, outdated. So that's what that list is and that's it.
All right. Anyone have any questions for the superintendent? I think it's important to let the, the public know also that that is a grant that's paying for the lunches.
It is a grant.
It's not coming from the school.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, all right. Well, all those, I will take a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda vote.
So move.
Second, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to the personnel agenda.
Thank you.
Good evening. Want to point out a couple of things on here. First, the, uh, item six, which is the retirement resignation of Larry Bowlen. Larry's been with us, I think I put on the, the update that I sent you for the last fifteen years. We got a chance to go over, they had a little celebration over there with some food, of course, um, at the high school today, got a chance to talk to him and, uh, he's excited about, about his opportunity to do that now. He's worked in a lot of different areas and, and, uh, I think he's enjoyed the last few years, particularly at the high school, uh, in his second shift position. So we're excited for him. Otherwise, I did try to convince him to come back and sub once his sixty days of retirement are finished, so. But he didn't seem very receptive to that. Which I get it, I get it. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out, um, is we, number ten is another one of our kind of final teaching hires for the year, but, um, Haley is a Pickle graduate and we have Haley on here and I believe, um, I'm just thinking, um, Pickle graduates right now, I thought we had somebody else on here right now, Omandesiz. Um, but that makes a total of six, six Pickwa City Schools graduates that'll be teaching hires for this year. And, um, I don't want anybody to ever think that, um, those people just get jobs because they don't, they got to go through a significant process too to be able to get jobs, but they did and they were, they're incredibly high quality. I speak, I think that speaks to the district, um, that we're able to bring back those, those young folks and come back here that are living in the community. Some of them already have children that are going to be in, in the school systems and, and those kinds of things. And those, those young folks come and they stay and they get entrenched in the community outside the schools. So it's exciting. I think we have that many kiddos coming, or they're not kids, they're young people. Some of them are almost thirty now, but, um, and, uh, coming back to teach in their, in their hometown. So that's pretty special, um, this year. Speaking of new teachers, we have new teacher orientations starting on the twelfth. Uh, we have three days scheduled right now and we'll wrap up preparation for that tomorrow morning. And we have, we have a couple more supplementals to wrap up still. I know we had some additions that we added because of numbers, um, that particularly, I think there was a volleyball one that we were able to, um, get some support in that particular area with a freshman slash like JV team. So she's really done a good job of building that up. So we do have a couple more things that we're finalizing with that. And then of course, with the substitutes, I just got another request to be a substitute teacher today. We're again adding to that particular because while we feel, felt really good about it last year, we're fingers crossed that we have good numbers and right now we do. So going into the school year, so, um, any questions about any of the new hires or anything else on the agenda that I sent out?
Are we still hiring permanent subs for schools?
So we're working through that right now. We talked initially about that. Uh, we're going to talk to Jeremy and Dwayne and see what their thoughts are. We do have a couple people that, um, are interested in being permanent subs, but we've gotten to a place now, because we started that during the initial COVID years, right, where we just didn't know what things were going to look like. And I think with the, the number of, um, absences and kind of getting back to a more moderate, um, time period like we were last year, we really want to look at that before we make decisions on it. So whether or not that's going to be something for every building versus a couple for the district or, um, none at all, I think we still have to talk about that. But, um, we do have a couple of long-term subs that have been full-time subs in the past that are already coming back. I just have to get them on the agenda for next month, so. Uh, soon to come.
Is Zach a head JV coach for girls basketball? You got volleyball, I'm assuming.
Oh, I think, so that's, I think that's the one you asked about during the meeting the other day, Sean. Zach is varsity assistant volleyball coach and head JV basketball coach. Uh, that would be girls, yep. But I am going to confirm that now that I said it. Cause I think, and I can look up here because I have that, I have a hold of it, so just to confirm. I know that, um, Heath hasn't wrapped up his junior varsity or, uh, J, uh, junior high, uh, coaches yet, but I know he already has his, um, most of his varsity and Zach will be with boys. Yep, yep. So correction, he will be with the boys program for basketball. Yep. Other questions or thoughts on that?
Remind us again about substitute teachers?
Just give us a call. Um, if it's long-term subs, we hire them here. You guys hire those. But the day-to-day subs, we run through Miami County ESC so they can get into a consortium and be able to pick up jobs, multiple districts. So if they call us, we, we interview everybody that's going to sub. So they just start with me and then I get them connected with the ESC to fill out the paperwork and then it's a pretty quick process from there.
But then if we use them through the ESC, we pay them?
We do. They, they make our money. One sixty, I believe is where we wrapped up last year. We've had conversations about whether or not we moved that scale a little bit, but we're still one of the most competitive districts within, I would say, a twenty to thirty mile ra, radius and looking at their numbers. So a hundred and sixty dollars a day, um, for a day-to-day sub.
Qualification? Because after COVID, we moved away from the need for bachelor's degree. Is that still in place?
That still is in place. The, um, Ohio Department of Education workforce has extended that so that we can have non-bachelor subs. And we do utilize those young folks, particularly they're, they're young people that we already know because they went to Pickle City Schools and we interview them and work through some challenges occasionally, but for the most part, they do a great job. We've got one that we're going to bring onboard in a more permanent fashion. She, she's an educator, going to be an educator. She's this close to her bachelor's degree, so she's been subbing and it really helps them get a head start. So I think we had four or five, maybe last year with that non-bachelors that were our kids, um, and that's been very, very helpful for us. And they get the same pay. There's no differentiation in that, but then we can encourage them to try to become, get their teacher's license too, if they really enjoy that and it works out well for us. So the non-bachelor sub license has been really good for us.
We just got an email. Did you get the email right before the board meeting?
Yeah, I got it today.
Somebody that just graduated, going to be an educator at the Wright State, um, campus and she says, I'm interested, I'll, I can do it on this day. So it'll get her experience, but she's already been through the whole Career Center program So it'll get her experience, but she's already been through the whole Career Center program for teacher leadership, so she's got a really good head start. She'll be great.
Yeah, it's, it's been really good, so we've been happy with that.
So how are we setting the subs for buses?
Right, that's a good question. I just met with, uh, the two, the director, assistant director today. We've got four people right now in process to become licensed, one of which is coming from out of state. Is already licensed as a bus driver, just needs the 12 hours seat time plus pre-service, so he'll be done. Right now, we're two, two over with all four of them and one of them was an aide already and has been training. He'll be licensed in time. Um, so that'll put us at just two permanent subs to start the year. And then we have two more people in the pipeline that will need the full training, which is going to take us about six weeks to get done. And then we have four more people in the district that are bus CDL with passenger licensed, whether they're custodians or aides, that we have available in emergency that are already on our staff. So, r- right now, um, Lou Jean has done a great job. They have, trying to get people in the door, picking up four people over the summer. Uh, and we actually had a fifth that we kind of turned away, but people that were interested in, in having two that are close to licensure is huge this year. So, my question to her was, if we start school tomorrow, can we run all the routes? And she, so then she starts, instead of giving me a yes answer, which is what I want, she gives me all the dots that she's got to fill in. And I said, no, let's go back to the routes. And she said, absolutely. We can run every route if we had to right now. But we, because we have those, you all agreed to let us pay people a little bit more to be able to get and, and maintain that CDL with passenger while they're doing another job. You know, and then you throw a guy like Joe Taylor in there as a principal and got his, we can, if we have to go all hands on deck, we're, we're going to be able to move kids. So, it's really good. Good question.
All right, any more questions for Tony? All right, I will take a motion to approve the personnel agenda. Do we have a second? Oh, we have a second? All right, Jeremy, please call roll.
Mr. Ford.
Uh, I will be abstaining from this one because I have a relative on the supplemental contact list.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. McManus.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
All right, personnel agenda is approved. Moving now to new business. Business. Recommend board approval of the attached resolution.
We're going to recommend the board approval.
Go ahead.
Of the attached resolution determining to proceed to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of current expenses for the Pickle Public Library. So, um, we, we are the tax agent for the library. They have their own board and they make their own decisions. So you're not making a decision to put a levy on for them. They've already done that. But they can't do that without, uh, um, taxing, um, agency, which would be us or the city. And it falls under us because they are a school, um, library. So you're just approving their decision to, um, put a levy on the ballot. And it's a...
Is it a renewal or are they adding some?
It's a renewal.
A renewal.
Yeah, so it won't cost anybody anymore. They're just renewing.
Just a renewal?
Just a renewal, yep. So again, their board already made the decision. They voted to do it. They're going to put the levy on. We just have to approve it because it's a school library, so.
All right, any questions on that? All right, now I will take a motion to approve the, uh, resolution for the tax levy for the Pickle Public Library.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all right. Um, Jeremy, please call roll for that.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mrs. McManus.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Uh, we have nothing for hearing of the public non-agenda items.
Did, I had that we polled till July meeting, the superintendent contract amendment. We didn't do that last month.
We don't need to do that.
No.
Because of the vetoes.
Pardon?
Oh. We don't need to do that because of the vetoes.
Oh, okay, because of state.
That was going to be if things went into place.
Oh, that was because of states.
Governor vetoed all stuff, so there's nothing there.
Because we, there was no change.
Junk.
Nope, nothing there.
All right, our, uh, next regular meeting is actually August 6th, um, 2025. Special meeting, um, where we are going to be discussing primarily athletics, I believe, on August 6th. Work session for the board. Um, and that is at, that's from tw- at 12?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock in the morning to 12.
Yep.
Mrs. Whip.
August 6th, the boards, the board work session.
Right here, yep. And then the next regular meeting would be August 28th at 6:00 PM here.
At the board office.
You said August 6th at 8:00?
Yep, 8:00 AM. All right, um, seeing having no other business, I need to take a motion to move into executive session um, to consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personnel, personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance and negotiate with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance. And there will be no, uh, decisions coming out of this meeting. So we need a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of moving into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, we are now in executive session.